Public comments. Does any member of the public have public comments on non-agendized item? You may, you may fill out a request and speak. Please do so, and you have three minutes to speak. Are there any public comments at this time for non-agendized item? Dale Helbig.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Dale Helbig, Park Santiago. Wanted to just start off by saying I was kind of disappointed at the Historical Resource Commission meeting that was held a few weeks ago and the fact that an agenda item was pulled off the agenda due to legal recommendations, and I'm hoping that that eventually gets placed back on the agenda. Anyway, I'm here to talk about 2525 Main Street Development. I put together a packet. I'll email it to you guys later on. Essentially, it has seventeen projects that have occurred in the city since the 1970s that are labeled specific developments that are next to R1 zoning areas. What's interesting to me is, out of those seventeen, all but two of them had height restrictions of thirty-five feet for the special, or for the specific development. Those two exceptions are the OC Register Building over on Grand Avenue and the one that was just recently passed here a short time ago, the Tiny Tim Plaza, which still had a restriction of forty-five feet. Main Street Development, which is next to R1 zoning, is wanting to go as high as eighty-six feet. We find that that's totally inappropriate for that area, and we hope that the city does not approve that project as it's presently designed. It's too high. It's too incompatible with the area, and we hope it's tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Does anyone else in the public have any comments they'd like to make at this time with regards to non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments, and we'll move to the consent calendar. At this time, we'd like to consider consent items number, consent items A and B. Do any members have any corrections to the minutes and the items that they wish to pull separate from the discussion or abstain from?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make one correction to the minutes. Under my Commissioner comments from the previous meeting on April 23rd, it states that I inquired about a code amendment to reduce parking, and in reality, I just was inquiring about staff's proposed adjustments to the parking standards, not a reduction or an increase whatsoever.
Okay. I have also a comment in my comments at the end of the meeting. I stated the San Ana Planning Department should start up the joint planning process with Orange again, based on the number of projects that are going on at the, in the north end of, or proposed for the north end of San Ana. It was specifically bringing the joint planning organizations together. Okay. Are there any comments, changes? Do I have a motion to approve the amended minutes?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to Eric Alderetti's absentee. Do I have a motion to approve his absentee?
I'll move through.
Second. Second, Cynthia?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Eric Alderetti absent. We'll move on to the business calendar. Please be advised that the action of the Planning Commission shall become effective on the day following the first regularly scheduled city council meeting after the ten-day appeal period unless, if allowed by the San Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within ten days of the date of the commission's actions, or unless set forth by public hearing by the city council. An appeal from a decision or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. We will move on to item number one. This is site plan review of number 2017-09 and the density bonus agreement, number 2017-02, to allow the construction of a 552-unit mixed-use affordable residential community with 10,000 square feet of commercial space located at 2110 and 2114 East First Street. Now, this item has been requested to be adjourned to a special meeting, but before we do so, I'd like to know if there are any written communication received on this item?
Yes, and it has been distributed to the commission.
Okay, thank you. And is there any member of the public at this point in time that would like to speak? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Coming back to the commission, do we have a motion to adjourn item number one to a special meeting to be held on May 21st at 5:30?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue the item till our meeting on May 21st, which will be a special meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Beatrice, seconds. Any further discussion?
Actually, that would be continue to the reg, this is, you are continuing a regular meeting. So it'll be a regular meeting, because this is a regular meeting.
Okay.
It would be a regular meeting.
That's, that's not what's, that's not what's noted here in the, in the agenda. It's a special meeting, because the regular meeting should have been the 21st.
Today.
Twenty-eight.
It's a special meeting.
So my motion stands.
Motion stands for a special meeting on May 21st at 5:30. We're all in agreement with that. Okay. Having said that, we have, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Eric Alderetti absent. This is time placed to consider item number two, conditional use number 2017-34 and 2017-35 to allow after-hours operations until 2:00 a.m. and the sale of alcoholic beverages for, for on-premise consumption at Main Sports Grill located at 2531 South Main Street. Staff, do you want to present at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Before you, we do have item Conditional Use Permit 2017-34 and Conditional Use Permit 2017-35 for Main Sports Grill located at 2531 South Main Street. The proposed project is to allow an after-hours operation until 2:00 a.m. and to allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for on-premise The site is located within the General Commercial Zoning District C2, has a general plan designation of general commercial, and is surrounded by an outer repair, single-family residence to the east of the subject parcel property and service uses around the property. Just before you is also a site plan of the existing single-story commercial building with surface parking in the front off of Main Street and a surface parking in the back of the property. This is a proposed floor plan. As you can see in yellow are the areas highlighted where the applicant proposes to display the alcohol beverages and store the alcohol beverages. Altogether, it is under the 5% gross floor area altogether for the alcohol storage and display area. And this is a current site photo of the property looking, looking at the building from Main Street. On March 12, 2018, staff presented the items to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the COPs and requested that the staff coordinate with the applicant to address four outstanding questions. Before you are the four questions from one through four. The first item was requested that the applicant renotice to, sorry, renotice to properties within 2,000-foot radius of the subject parcel. The, we received the notices on April, on May 3, 2018, and we renoticed them, sorry, we received the notices and we renoticed on May 13, May 3, 2018. An additional request was that we also received a title report. We received a title report from the applicant on April 10, 2018. In addition, the, the owner was requested to attend a Delhi neighborhood community meeting. The applicant's daughter, mother, and a property owner both, all attended the Delhi neighborhood community meeting where they discussed and answered any questions from the community. In total, there are approximately twenty individuals, residents and property owners within the subject parcel property. A list of the questions were attached in the exhibit, in the staff report as Exhibit 10. And lastly, a copy of the lease agreement showing the date that the business owner signed the lease with the property owner was also shared with staff. And in the agreement, it shows that the applicant signed a lease on May 23, 2017. This is a site chronology of the origin, from the, the moment that the restaurant closed, the applicant, to now March 2018. As you can see, there are a couple of various illegal marijuana dispensaries at the subject property, and it also shows the date that the business owner signed their lease. And as you can tell, they submitted, they signed their lease on May 2017, submitted their CUP applications December 2017. The restaurant was closed and applied for a certificate of occupancy on January 2018. Between January 2018 and February 2018, the applicant, the applicant applied some site improvements. Those include restriping the parking lot, re-landscaping, and submitting permits for a new trash enclosure. On February 2018, staff conducted a site visit to verify that all the improvements were completed, and on March 2018, we had our first public hearing for the two items. The site currently meets all the San Ana Municipal Code standards. The use is allowed by right to allow a restaurant at the subject facility. The alcohol beverage and after-hours would be allowed through, would require a conditional use permit. The restaurant will provide a service to the community and its visitors of the city of San Ana. The alcohol license will encourage the new opportunities for business growth and private development as it will be an ancillary use to the eating establishment. Standards and conditions have been placed to ensure that the rest, the restaurant will not deviate from the planned operation reviewed under this application and will not become an attractive nuisance to the surrounding businesses and residents. With that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the Planning Commission approve Conditional Use Permit 2017-34 as condition and Conditional Use Permit 2017-35 as condition.
Does the commission have any questions to ask? Cynthia?
This is the first time I've read a document asking, um, 2-15, number nine, prior to release of the alcohol beverage control license, the entertainment permit application for the restaurant shall be approved. So does that mean, even though, let's say, the ABC license is approved, you're, they're not going to be able to serve alcohol or use it until their entertainment license is approved?
That is correct.
And how much longer do you think that will take?
The line use, oh, sorry, the entertainment permit is currently being reviewed by the Orange County Fire Authorities and the Building Department. We expect it to be maybe less than a month or so.
Ken?
I got a couple of questions here. I noticed that the, the ABC license type 47 was canceled in May 2017, but also the, indicated on my report on March, March 2018, type 48, ABC license need, will need to be surrendered or canceled to comply with our San Ana Municipal Regulation. The, I, I noticed here the applicant applied for type 47, including wine, spirit, and as well, you know, beer and wine and spirit. So if, if 47, 48 already been canceled in May 2017, why condition to say 48 had to be surrendered? I'm, I'm a little confused on that.
Thank you. The applicant surrendered its license on, as you mentioned, the type 48. The applicant currently, according to the ABC website, has a type 48, but will surrender it for a type 47. In the city of San Ana, we only permit the type 47, no on-premise consumption.
And then the next question is, the restaurant is operating right now, right? But without, the restaurant is operating without selling alcohol. Is that correct?
So they're still pending their certificate of occupancy inspection. The restaurant can open without the alcohol sales.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm sorry, is this common, is this common to do to perform the one to the other one? And if it's not, what was the decision based on to do this?
It is. Sometimes with the ABC license, they can be transferred, but it's, it's, it's upon the city's jurisdiction to determine, or to allow if the, if 48 or 47 would be allowed. So in San Ana, 47 would be the only license that would be allowed.
Okay, I'm going back to my prior question regards to the ABC license and the entertainment permit.
I'm sorry.
Why, why was that decided to do it this way?
Well, we noted that we want to make sure that everything is permitted before they can open, and it was one of the conditions we determined that, well, we saw the application is still pending, so we want to make sure that they, that their application is approved prior to the.
I believe that that was a request of the commission. I believe that the commission requested that we have the entertainment license in place at the same time that we have the ABC license. That was the commission's request to do that. Is that, please say?
I think you're correct, because there were allegations that she had been having entertainment at the facility without an entertainment permit.
Correct, correct. Exactly. And she confirmed that there was entertainment that was going to occur in the future, and then we requested to have a license tied to the ABC license. Okay. So that was our question. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, kind of piggybacking off of what Commissioner Contreras Lea said. So typically speaking, the applicant, as they're applying for their conditional use permit, they may or may not submit with the ABC, but the ABC does not grant the license for the location until they get word from the city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not really a unique situation that we would be withholding anything, because really, it's just standard protocol. They don't, they, the ABC does not follow through until the city, you or your colleagues tell them to follow through. Is that correct?
That is correct. We provide them with a copy of a resolution, a signed resolution.
Okay. My other questions are, so as I'm reading this, the chronology, the one that you showed on the screen was a, I'm assuming it was a little abbreviated, because in our staff report, Exhibit 8, it says that Main Sports Grill began operation with city permits in June of 2017. And then in August of 2017, an illegal marijuana dispensary on the site was issued a third notice of violation. So in reading that, I'm left to assume that there was a marijuana dispensary operating at the same time a restaurant was operating. Is that correct?
So our records do indicate that the third violation was issued, but it also showed that it was closed immediately. So it's, it's kind of what we gathered from our investigation. So we can't.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying. So you've got a restaurant operating, and I'm not in code form, excuse me, a code enforcement officer, but I assume that when code enforcement issues a notice, it's because they physically have gone to the site, they've verified the violation, and then issued the notice, correct?
That is correct.
So then, there was a restaurant operating, and then in August of 2017, city staff went out to the site and identified a dispensary operating and then cited them.
That is correct.
Okay. No, no, thank you for, and by the way, that was a great chronology, so thank you for laying that out for us, because I think a lot of us were confused last time. The other one that I have is, in January 2018, same exhibit, Main Street Grill submitted an application for a certificate of occupancy, and I think you might have already answered this. So there is not currently a CVO for the site right now?
Not an approved certificate of occupancy.
And, and they haven't had one since they've applied?
So they submitted their application, but it's pending the, the inspection.
Okay.
So they paid their fees.
So, but, but nothing's ever been issued for them to operate as a restaurant with a CVO?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
And Beatrice?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few questions. On Exhibit A, it says that the rear door would be used as an exit only, and no outdoor activities are permitted. What about the front door? Are outside activities going to be permitted, or have there been any measure of any noise in the front area?
So they would have to cease outdoor entertainment or any outdoor activity at 12, and that is to, to preserve the, or sorry, to consider the residence to the east of the property. So that is on the back, but we want to put it for the entire site, on the entire site.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, it says to comply with the San Ana Municipal Code, they had to attend a Delhi community meeting. Is that usually the requirement? Because in the last hearing, I requested that they reach out to Delhi, but not necessarily attend the community Delhi meeting. Is that usually a requirement?
Not for, not for the Conditional Use Permit for alcohol or after-hours, no.
Okay. It was just per our request, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Ken?
Scott, just to clarify for, for me. So right now, are they operating as an eating establishment without alcohol, or are they closed? Because in one place, it says they're operating without alcohol beverages, but then you said they don't have a CVO. So they really technically shouldn't be operating.
So they are not operating. They're completely closed, but they submitted their application. So the first step is to submit the application. This next step is to get their inspection and get approval. So that is where they are, pending their inspection.
Okay. And then, once they did inspection, they can get the CVO, then they can operate without the alcohol until all of this gets worked out with ABC?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the second question. On the entertainment application, is there conditions in that, under that agreement, not to be able to charge to get in for any kind of events or music? Because I know it's, it says it's a family restaurant, the children can come in, but then also they're getting the entertainment. So are, under that application, does it have any, say anything about not being able to charge to get in, like after a certain hour or anything of those? What I'm concerned is that I don't want this to turn into a daytime restaurant, nighttime nightclub. So do we need to stipulate in our conditions that they not charge, you know, to get in to any, any, to the venue? Or is that already covered under the entertainment application?
Actually, if I may just jump in real quick, wouldn't, for them to be able to charge, wouldn't they have to apply for and receive a banquet CUP? Because I, I mean, instead of possibly adding conditions, they would just have to apply for that, correct? But with the banquet facility?
It would be the entertainment.
Entertainment or a rage.
Right.
Okay.
Is that different from what they are currently applied for under the entertainment application?
Entertainment is, is free.
Under?
There's no cover charge. It's just walk in, hear someone playing a guitar, music playing, or a little dance, or no cover charge. Cover charge takes it to all of the level.
A whole different entertainment application?
That's Conditional Use Permit for your body weight.
Okay.
It would have to be.
Okay. I just want, I just want to make sure.
So clarification on that. They're not applying for that kind of a permit, therefore, or CUP, therefore we, they aren't going to be able to charge?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I want to go back to Beatrice for a second, and that is, is that, one thing to note is, if, if there is some challenges that occur from local neighbors within a neighborhood association, we have recommended as a commission for the applicant to go back and meet with the neighborhood association to give, get further clarification and further support for their project. So it's not something, I mean, the commission has requested that in the past. So, Ken or Beatrice?
Yes, I have one more question. January 2018, the city and staff conducted the site visit and discovered the restaurant was opening for business and selling alcohol without the requirement. I was just curious, what triggered the city to make this site visit? Because Manuel, some restaurants that are in the name Grill and Bar, but they only sell alcohol. So what triggered this? Was it someone calling in, or, or was it after the dispensary was shut down?
Typically, we'll go to the site and take some photos, just to make sure everything's up to code. And then, in this case, since we haven't had, we hadn't had an applicant in, in a long time, it was recommended that we do a site inspection, just to make sure everything's up to code. And that's when it was found.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission of staff? Okay. Hearing none, would the applicant at this point in time like to speak? Is the applicant here?
Hello, and thank you for having us, my mom and I, back here. And I apologize for being late. We had some type of emergency with my father, so, but at least we, we made it. There's one thing I just want to clear. I think, when were you saying that, about the dispensary, that it was closed or they had it? Because when I got the place, there wasn't no dispensary. It was way before I went in there. And I think it was saying, they were saying sometime on August 17. And when we got the premises, the premises did not have nothing of dispensary, nothing going on there. It was before that. I think, I want to say maybe two months, three months before that, the landlord had gotten those people out. So I don't want you guys to have the image that I went in there and I had the restaurant going and I had the dispensary, which it was not like that. No, you know, there's no way I would have allowed that. But that's one of the things, the only that I wanted to clear. And I hope that, with everything being said, I hope you guys take the right decision and give me the opportunity to work in San Ana. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, before I go on, two things. One is, or one thing, I'd like to, does any commissioner have anything to disclose regarding this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually, in April, ran into Mr. Rodriguez, who's listed as the applicant on our agenda, and we, we had a brief chat, but we did not discuss anything beyond what's included in our staff report.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Anybody else? All right. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. At this point in time, we will open for the public hearing. Does anyone from the public want to discuss anything with regards to item number two? Seeing the hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I appreciate staff's condition number six, you know, trying to make the attempt to work with the applicant to, you know, try to give us some comfort that, you know, there'll, there'll be a watchful eye on them and hoping that they will follow the policies and, and the code. But with that being said, it, it's really going to be hard for me to support this application. I mean, I, I just, the, the applicant came in last time, told us that she, she convinced the ABC that she knew what she was doing, and then came in and didn't bother to obtain any of the permits. And I, of all the restaurateurs that I know that have secured ABC licenses, none of them go into a city and go, oh, maybe I don't need one here. I mean, it's just, that's never something I've ever heard of from anybody that's operated. So this wasn't a situation where someone was coming in brand new and didn't understand the process. And, you know, you just kind of say, oh, well, it's a rookie mistake, and, you know, you'll be better on the next go-round. But in this case, they, they, the applicant has proclaimed that they've operated other places, and here they were operating without the necessary permits. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to actually deny the CUP before us today.
Do we have a second?
I have a question. Do I have to make second first?
No, I'm just, you can.
I have a question for you, Phil. Are you denying both, that they're open until 2:00 a.m. and also the, allowing them to sell alcohol, or?
Actually, thank you for asking that. Yes, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to deny both. I don't think we should be rewarding folks for not following the rules and laws. And by granting this, I mean, once that ship sails, it sails. And I don't think that we'll get it back and see a situation where there won't be an impact to the community.
And to staff. And if we deny it, then if they, if it is approved, they'll be open until 12 only, correct?
No.
If the permit is approved, their application?
If you only approve the CUP for the alcohol, they can only stay open until 12 a.m. If you only approve the CUP for the alcohol, they can only stay open until 12:00 AM.
I'm going to make a second to Phil's motion.
Okay, so we have first and, we have first and second. Is there any discussion or any further discussion on this item? Ken?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval.
Ken, you can't make a motion, you can't make a motion at this point in time. There's a motion and a second on this item at this moment. Okay, so we need to discuss and close on this motion before we move on to a second motion. Correct? Okay, thank you.
I believe the applicant was confused between type 47 and type 48, because the, the location have type 48 at that time, and that's the reason why I'm clarifying with what the, and but even the previous owner have canceled type 48, but it, type 48 is transportable as well. And I believe the, you know, I think the applicant may have confused, well, I do have type 48, so I can able to sell alcohol at that location. That's my assumption.
Okay, thank you. Lynette?
I will not be loading support of the motion, and I appreciate staff giving me chronology, because I think I was pretty, you know, pretty hard last time for the last meeting, but this actually gives me a lot of insight of what happened. I actually, I agree with Ken, that I think, based on what the applicant said at the last meeting and what I'm reading, it appears that there, she might have been misled as to what she could do. Because the timing of the time the previous owner canceled the ABC and her signing into the agreement are exactly the same timeline. So it's exactly what she explained to us last time, which leads me to believe that she might have been misled as to what she could and couldn't do there. She spent a lot of money on site improvements, she's gone out and met with the neighborhood and reassured them. She's willing to meet all the conditions and apply for the entertainment as she was asked for. And I, I really feel strongly that, that she's done everything that has been asked of her. And based on the chronology, I think, yes, there was some mishap. And I do, you know, I saw the flyers and the operations, but I think that based on what I've seen from then till now, and how the section has been closed to try to work this all out, that she's doing everything she needs to do to make good on her application. So I would be in favor of recommended action, but I will not be supporting the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion at this point in time? Hearing none, we have a motion. Madam Secretary, could you repeat the motion so that we know exactly what we have?
There was a motion by Commissioner Becerra to deny both recommended actions, number one and two, and there was a second from Commissioner Mendoza.
Okay. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
We can roll call.
Roll, roll call? We'll do a roll vote.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Verino?
No.
Commiss, or Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No.
Chair McLaughlin?
No.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
No.
Motion fails, four to.
So we have four to, motion failed, and Eric Alderetti is absent. Okay, coming back to the commission, is there a motion that we would like to make at this point in time with regards to? Go ahead.
I think there's a lot of inundusiness, because it looks like there's some things that happen that typically have to happen in a certain process, and permits have to be held and so forth. I think in good faith, the owner has tried to fulfill what we've asked for. I conceive a confusion. Is there any kind of stipulation that we can add? Or, I don't want to say discretionary basis, but I don't know, something to assure us that things are following along?
We can ask, we can ask for a six-month or a year review by the planning.
There's a year review already in the conditions, but you can.
How long before did the first review?
Six.
It's a, it's a one-year in the condition, but you could modify that.
If we modify it to six months, then I feel at least we're trying to keep the community in mind and yet give business an opportunity and meet somewhere in the middle.
So, so, so just so what I'm hearing, just to understand, so, we're uncomfortable today granting them something that'll run with the land forever. But in six months, we might be okay with it, because we're just going to forget the fact that they just up and operated without any inquiry to the city, without any other permits.
At the end of the day, we have a story here that tells us what happened, and there's another side of it that we can kind of like think happened. So if, I can see Ken's point where a confusion could have happened with prior ownership and the licensure with the alcohol.
When, when somebody invests this much money into an alcohol permit, I mean, everybody spends their money differently. I'll tell you right now, I would be very concerned. I'd be asking every question I could, and especially when the applicant testified before us that she convinced the ABC that she knows how to do it, and she did all her homework and everything. So it's one thing to say rookie mistake, you didn't know any better, and you know, the, the property owner didn't give you the right information, but that's not what was told to us. If that, if her testimony hadn't been given to us, I'd be more in line with you and Commissioner Nguyen. But that's not what happened. She came in and said, oh, I convinced the ABC that I'm good at this, I know what I'm doing, and then turned around and operated legally.
I understand.
So that sounds like willful intent, which I could not support.
Let me, I want to ask one question of you, Phil.
Yes.
And that is, is that, understand what your point is, but we knew from the last meeting that she operated openly with the business before, you know, just after the marijuana shop, marijuana dispensary was moved out. So we knew that, we had all that understanding. So the person is compliant. My question to you would be, what would make you turn and say this is an acceptable situation? I don't see that that's, I see that you've made the judgment based on the previous discussion, not necessarily the revised discussion.
Well, as a commissioner, I'm obligated to listen to all the testimony and review what staff provides us. And so I've done that, and I'm, you know, kept an open mind. But with that being said, my ultimate judgment on this is that I don't believe, based on what I've seen and read so far, that this project or this site will not come back to us six months, a year, two years, with potentially police visits or other nuisances cited. So my concern being up here is, would I feel comfortable approving that, knowing that the surrounding community would or would not be impacted? My personal belief is, I believe they would be impacted, and that's why I won't be supporting them.
I just wanted to say, the reason why I'm voting to not grant them the permits is because, my question is, what would have happened if the city would have not visited the site? You know, would they have continued to serve alcohol and entertainment, you know, willfully? That, that's the reason, when I saw all the chronologic order, and it kind of opened my eyes, and you know, I was not too much into supporting the last time, and you know, the majority voted to push this. But you know, what are we going to do with the, with the ones that? I just don't want other businesses to be encouraged or feel that they can do the same, because we granted them the permit, even though they didn't have the right licenses. I just want to make sure that they understand that you can't just come to our city and operate selling alcohol and entertainment without the proper permits. It's not the kind of city we want to be. So that's all I want to say.
If I can add just to Commissioner Mendoza's comments, I wholeheartedly agree. I think as a commission, if we love our city, we should demand the utmost professionalism from any operator. This, this isn't a driver's license where you go, you're not the best driver, but I get it, you need a car to get around. This is a situation where we're bestowing upon somebody a huge benefit, but also a huge obligation. And I, again, do not believe that they're ready for that obligation in our city.
Cynthia?
From what I understand, they have another restaurant in the city, correct?
It was in Anaheim. This is the first one in San Ana.
I thought they owned another.
We had the one in Anaheim, but we sold it to get this, this one here. And, I mean, we, the one I had just mentioned earlier is the one in Anaheim, and my mom had the one in San Ana. But, sorry that I'm cutting in, but based on what I was just telling Nguyen right now, is they went into the site because I went in to apply. They never went because they had to go and visit, and we just figured out, obviously, it's true. We went in. It's not like I was running it and they caught me. No, I went into the city to find out. Correct, Nguyen? So it wasn't like, that was a kept running illegal place, no permit, no, I went in first and asked, what is it that I need? Because I found out this and this is wrong. License 48 are not admitted anymore in San Ana, and we didn't know that. So we had to convert our 48 into a 47, but I was the one that went into the city and asked all this information and started everything. That's how they rented the site and took the pictures and took all what they needed to take.
Lisa?
Based on all the discussion, would you like to reopen the public hearing for any more comment?
Sure. So at this point in time?
I, I don't, I don't feel it's necessary. I'm, I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
Subsequent motion.
All right.
So I'll, I'm going to motion that recommended action, which is, adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2017-34 to allow after-hours operation until 2:00 AM, and adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2017-35 as condition to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to make a comment. I may, would like, I would like to add to with the six-month review by the city. Is that possible? Add to condition?
You should ask.
Yes, we can change.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that condition. We can change item number.
Condition six.
Yeah, condition six to six-month review rather than a year.
Make, modify the CUP if it could be reviewed by city in six months. And I would like to second the motion.
So you second any amended motion? Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, would you read the motion, please?
We have a motion by Commissioner Verino to support recommended actions number one and two with a modification to condition number six to that city staff shall review after six months. And that was seconded by Commissioner Nguyen.
All right. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Votes, do we want to take a roll call? We can do that. We'll take a roll call, Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Becerra?
Nope.
Commissioner Verino?
Yes.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes.
Chair McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
No.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Motion passes four to.
Four to, and Eric Alderetti is absent. Okay, thank you. Before I go on, I didn't notice, Nguyen was over there, so, would you like to introduce yourself, Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Min Thai. I recently joined the city on May 1st. I come to you from the city of Alphamani, and also with over 25 years of experience in community development and economic development. I look forward to working with the commission and our staff here to help move our city forward in terms of both land use as well as advancing our general plan goals. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
Great, welcome, Nguyen. Thank you. Okay, this is the time and place to consider item number three, conditional use permit 2018-07 to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at Gus's world famous fried chicken proposed at 102 North Sycamore Street. Staff, are you ready to present?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you stated, the application before you tonight is for a conditional use permit 2018-7 for Gus's world famous fried chicken. It's a mouthful. They are proposing to locate at 102 North Sycamore Street on the northwest corner of Sycamore and First Street. So as mentioned, this is a conditional use permit to allow the, propose the new restaurant to sell alcoholic beverages in conjunction with their food as, as an ancillary use. And they are currently going, undergoing tenant improvements to bring that building up to current building code. It was a building that was vacant for a number of months, I believe even a little more than a year. I have to look at the records, but previously used as a retail furniture store. And so they are coming in with a brand-new use to kind of liven up the, the building itself. And as any other conditional use permit for a alcohol sales, it requires approval of a CUP before you tonight. So the location here is highlighted in the green outline is the historic building there on the northwest corner of the intersection. It's located within our SD84 transit zoning code, but it has an urban center subzone. It's still located within the downtown vicinity, and so I believe it, it does mix well with the current uses of the downtown. So it is surrounded by commercial uses throughout with the Second Street promenade to the north. And this is a, an image of the facade on Sycamore Street, and to the left is First Street there. So they will be proposing this as the main entrance to the restaurant. And this is the site plan, as most of the buildings in the downtown, they're built to the property line, and so that's the case for this one as well. They are proposing to use the majority of the building and partitioning off a space for a future tenant, which is for the address 201 West First Street. So in the floor plan that I've provided, the future tenant space, that'll be for someone else to come in later. They are providing spec improvements, so that whoever the tenant is, they can come in and submit their own personal tenant improvements, whatever they need to do inside that space. To the north of that space is the restaurant restrooms, and then the kitchen prep area to the left, and then towards the Sycamore entrance is the dining area. So they're only proposing to, to use about 27 square feet dedicated to beer, beer storage and display. And a little bit about the restaurant, it will be operating within a historic building, kind of similar uses to those along the Broadway and the Main Street arterials. The standards of the code will address any potential negative impacts. The project is to provide an additional dining amenity, especially with the, the menu that we've long missed with the fried chicken at the Fourth Street Market. And so the, you know, it's something that we're definitely looking forward to. The standards of the, the code also ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment, and along with the hours of operation that are proposed, will not become an attractive nuisance to the area. And with that, staff will finalize the presentation and recommends that the commission approve conditional use permit 2018-7. We do have the applicant here, Teresa Brennan, to answer any of your questions, and I am available as well. Thank you.
Before we start, does any commissioner have anything to disclose on this item before? No, okay. Does the, does the commission have a question of staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question. On the Broadway side, is that going to be a public access point, or is that just more of an emergency exit or deliveries?
Okay, so the Broadway side, let me go back one, one more. That's actually just the, the Broadway side is a parking lot that belongs to, I believe, Deirdre's?
No, I understand.
Yeah, so the, there is an entrance.
One more, go one more?
Yeah, so that's an existing entrance for the, for the tenant, and then to the north is the exit only, I believe, for the building code requirements to have that additional exit, especially on the other side of the building.
So it's just an emergency exit, that's it?
Yes, and Teresa's here to clarify that. She's been submitting and going through numerous revisions with the building code, building department for the building code requirements. So she can help clarify that as well.
Thank you.
The, the building itself you just said was on historic registry, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And all the modifications or anything that's done will be in compliance to staying on the registry?
Yes, the interior improvements are not subject to any historic commission, but the exterior improvements are, as far as that is concerned, signage. improvements are, as far as that is concerned, signage, which is being reviewed by our general, um, our RAP team, you know, our, not current planning, but advanced planning, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, so Melanie's team is, is looking at all the signage downtown so that there is consistency with the SD eighty-four and also the historic signs.
All right. Any other questions?
Ivan, so are, is it shared bathrooms for both, for both tenants? So when the other tenant stays, is it like a hallway shared bathroom? Is that what I see?
I believe so. There is an opening that, uh, the future tenant has, uh, been proposed just before the exit. Um, that was the original plan, but Teresa can elaborate on that.
Okay.
She's been going through the tenant improvements.
Okay. First, before we start, Teresa, let's, are there any other questions of Ivan at this point in time that we'd like to have? No? Okay. Teresa?
Good evening. So yes, the restrooms are shared between the restaurant and the tenant. There's a hallway where, uh, the, there's a door actually where the customers from the tenant's space can enter the hallway and then go down the hall to the restrooms.
Any other questions of the applicant? Would you like to speak on this item at all, or...
Um, not really. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're excited to be in the city of Santa Ana.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're with the city or you're the applicant for this?
I'm the applicant.
Okay, glad. Thank you, yes. Um, I know the fact we have asked some of the applicants, you know, why not stay open later? I mean, is there a reason why you're closing so early? I love fried chicken, so I would do anything.
Uh, we have three other locations in California right now, and those are our standard hours.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Ken?
Um, I understand that you, you have offering, you are offering alcohol at the other locations. Could you tell me any location in California currently offering the alcohol, uh, under your company?
Yes, all of them are.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence on this item?
We have not.
Okay. Uh, we will now open the hearing for, uh, the, we will now open for a public hearing. Does anyone in the public like to come up and talk about this topic? Item number three. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission. Phil?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I'm happy to see that Gus's is going to select their first location in Orange County, right here in Santa Ana. And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt, uh, a resolution approving conditional use permit number two thousand eighteen dash zero seven as condition.
We have a second, Lynette? Any other discussion on the item? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is six-zero with Eric Alderetti absent. Thank you, Ivan. Thank you. Okay. At this time and place, uh, we are here to consider item number four, conditional use permit number two zero one eight dash oh eight to allow the existing fifty-eight-foot-tall wireless communication facility located at twenty-nine oh seven South Prote Way. Escola, you are discussing this?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, we have conditional use permit two thousand eighteen dash eight to allow an existing wireless facility be re-entitled for an additional ten years. This is an existing fifty-eight-foot-high, uh, major wireless communication facility disguised as a monastery located on an industrial site. Um, as part of the project, we're requesting that the applicant relandscaped at the base of the facility to conceal the outdoor equipment cabinets. And as previously mentioned, previously stated, the application is to, the application requires a new conditional permit for an additional ten years. The subject property is located within the light industrial zoning district, um, one, has a general plan designation of industrial, and is surrounded by warehouses, industrial uses, and a hotel to the east of the property. This is a current site plan. Nothing has changed since its original entitlement. There's, there's existing six cabinets at the ground level of the facility. And this is what the facility looks like. The picture was taken on, um, December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, so it is the current image of the facility. The project requires a new conditional use permit to extend the life of the wireless communication facility for another ten years. The existing wireless facility meets all the Santa Ana Municipal Code standards, and minor site improvements will refresh the site, um, and that is replanting at the ground, replanting at the base of the facility with, uh, ground cover and new vines to conceal the existing cabinets. In addition, uh, the new radio, remote radio units will be concealed with pocket socks to stealth the facility. With that, uh, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen dash eight as condition.
Okay. Does any of the Commission have anything to disclose on this item before we move on? No? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, so you have the, uh, fortunate opportunity to have been the one to have done the, uh, staff report for this one and then the next one that's coming up on the agenda.
That's correct.
So I'm glad I can ask this question. On the next one, which I won't get too far in the details because that's not before us at the moment, but there are some detailed conditions as to how that particular facility will be. I mean, really great detailed, uh, conditions. So I was just curious why those weren't carried over into this one as well?
Those conditions were from the original entitlement, and, um, we carried them over since we felt like they were applicable, um, today.
But, but there's no, from staff's perspective, no reason to add these, the ones from the, uh, next application into this one?
Um, well, the other facility was, uh, it's very distinct in the location, and, um, it's not, well, the location of the other facility is different from this location. This one's, um, can, or not seen from public street. It's behind an industrial building and, um, off of a, and not seen from the major art street on Harbor.
So mainly just more that this one is less prominently viewed from the community versus the one that will be coming up?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, Escola. Um, would the applicant like to make a statement on this item at this time? Hearing none? Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Does anyone in the public like to talk on item number three?
Uh, four.
Excuse me, four. Um, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission. Do we have a motion? Yes, Ken?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number two zero one eight dash zero eight as condition.
A second?
Okay. Your second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote six-zero with Eric Alderetti absent. At this time and place, we will consider item number five, conditional use permit two zero one eight dash zero nine to allow the sale of alcoholic beverage for on-premise consumption at Furibo Restaurant located at three-three-nine-six South Bristol Street.
Good evening, Chair, Rampani Commissioners. As previously stated, this is an application for a conditional use permit to allow for a type forty-one beer and wine on sale consumption ABC license at a new restaurant, uh, which is known as Furibo, located at thirty-three ninety-six South Bristol Place, uh, South Bristol Street, sorry. Again, as clearly indicated, it's a CUP to allow on-premise consumption of beer and wine. Um, as part of the application, the applicant's actually going through tenant improvements right now. The proposed suite that they're intending to, um, go into was currently a veterinary hospital, so it is being converted into a new restaurant at this location. Um, so the map as shown on the PowerPoint indicates the site. It's roughly about eleven acres. Uh, most people know it as the, um, Target Center off of Alton at Bristol Place. Um, currently, it's developed with, um, four buildings, um, as part of other avenues that are currently happening at this location. Just going to give you a brief history of what's going on right now. The Planning Commission approved a variance for this location a couple of months ago, which allowed for some of these vacant tenant spaces to be occupied by different type of uses. And then more recently, this body also approved a zoning code amendment to allow for a change of uses of up to twenty-five hundred square feet. So this is why we have this application before you today. Um, so more or less, the rectangle to your left of that image indicates the tenant space that there will be occupying, and it's approximately two thousand square feet. In addition to that, um, the lower L-shaped building is kind of being split into two buildings as part of a major facade improvements of that shopping center that the, um, property owner is currently undergoing. So a lot of renovations, a lot of new businesses are going into this, um, shopping center, and you'll be seeing a few other applications coming in in the near future for, um, CUPs as well. So more or less, this is the proposed floor plan. Again, as previously mentioned, it's approximately two thousand square feet and would accommodate about seventy different, or seventy patrons. Um, the rectangles, the red rectangles indicate the location of the proposed storage for the beer and wine, and the total area will not exceed five percent of the total square footage of the tenant space. Again, this is just an image of the elevation of the new restaurant. Um, this kind of shows three different tenant suites, uh, where you kind of see that there's currently some other alterations happening to the left of the image. Uh, so again, that's part of a major facade improvement that the property owner is currently Um, and with that, um, the applicant will comply with all the core requirements as identified in Santa Ana Municipal Code. And with that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number two thousand eighteen dash nine. Uh, feel free to answer any questions. Uh, the applicant is also here to answer any operational questions.
Before we start, again, does any of the Commissioner have anything to disclose on this item? Okay. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Up nearby this particular site, we have Buffalo Wild Wings, and if I remember correctly, they didn't have to obtain a conditional use permit to be open past midnight. And I'm not familiar, or I don't recall the reason why. I think it's distance away from residential. In this particular instance here, given where they're located at the Target Center, if they wanted to remain open past midnight, and I know that they indicate in the staff report they won't be open past midnight, but if they wanted to, because I, I live about half-mile away from there, so I'd love to see more late-night options, so just throwing that out there. But, um, could they open past midnight without having to apply for a conditional use permit from this location?
I would have to, um, measure the distance. Um, let me just take you back to this aerial image. Um, so it's primarily surrounded by commercial uses, but you do have some multifamily residential work kind of underneath where that subject unit indicates.
Right.
Um, so they might be within the hundred-and-fifty-feet distance requirement, so...
That's what it is, a hundred-and-fifty feet?
It's a hundred-and-fifty feet, correct. Um, so if they do want to operate after hours, they would probably have to apply for conditional use permit for after hours. Um, but the applicant does not intend to, um, operate past eleven. Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have just a general question for you because, uh, you know, from listening to a lot of these cases, I'm a little bit confused, but does this applicant have a certificate of occupancy now?
They did. They already applied for a certificate of occupancy as well as a business license.
Okay, they applied, but is it approved?
No, no. They have to go through their tenant improvements first in order for their certificate of occupancy to be approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Just out of curiosity, any of the other eateries in that strip mall, do any of them also serve alcohol? I mean, trying to sell, but...
Good, good question. I'm not too certain. Um, I did run a census tract analysis in terms of figure out the number of alcohol licenses, so within that census tract, there's currently fifteen, um, onsite ABC licenses, but I'm not too certain within this particular shopping center how many are currently there.
I'm with Phil. I'm, I'm excited to see this. Any new fusion, any new eateries, um, to liven up the area? There's a lot of walking folks can do because it's so accessible to the neighborhoods. Um, so I was just curious, because I don't think any other eateries there are providing any type of...
Not in that shopping center.
Kind of atmosphere. Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions of Jerry at this time? Thank you, Jerry. Would the applicant at, at this time like to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Fick with Tate and Associates. I'm the landlord's representative for the, for the shopping center. Um, and yes, we are going through some major revitalizations of the shopping center and looking forward to bringing more eateries as well. Um, but excited to be here tonight for, uh, Furibo, um, here to answer any questions that you may have as well, and the tenant, too.
Any questions of the applicant at this time?
Did you make a sound? I'm just...
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. All right. Um, Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item?
We have not.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up for public hearing. Does anyone like to, would anybody like to speak on this item at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Phil?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number two thousand eighteen dash zero nine as condition.
Second.
Second, Cynthia? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero with the absence of Eric Alderetti. At this time and place, to consider item number six, conditional use permit number two zero one eight dash one zero to allow the, an existing fifty-three-foot-tall wireless communication facility located at two-five-five-five South Main Street. Escola, would you like to present your... Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Before you, we have conditional use permit two thousand eighteen dash ten. It's to re-entitle an existing wireless facility, um, at it, at the property located at twenty-five, two thousand five-five-hundred-fifty-five South Main Street. As previously mentioned, this is an existing wireless communication facility. Um, it measures fifty-three feet in high, uh, tall. It is located, I'm sorry, it's disguised as a monopane. Um, as part of this project, there are no changes proposed to the facility and/or equipment Application requires a new conditional use permit to entitle for an additional ten years. The property is located within a general commercial C-two and light industrial zoning district, has a general plan designation of industrial. It is surrounded by railroad tracks, warehouse, and a future service station with a commercial use component. As previously mentioned, this is a very unique site, um, for the wireless facility. The wireless, the wireless facility is located in the center of the property, surrounded by self-storage, um, units, um, not open to the public. And this is an existing photo of the wireless facility disguised, as previously mentioned, as a monopane. The condition is permit would allow the existing wireless facility to stay in its place for an additional ten years. Um, the existing wireless facility meets all these standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code and is completely stealth. With that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the Planning Commission approve conditional use permit two thousand eighteen dash ten as condition. Thank you.
Okay. Before we start, do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose on this item? Hearing none? We'll move on to, uh, Commissioner... Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just really more of a comment. I, I, as I mentioned before, a little foreshadowing, I appreciate the conditions in here. I think that it's great that we got down to this level of detail. I just, you know, this is the sort of quality that we should be asking for these, um, these projects. So I just want to say thank you for putting that in there and, and paying attention to where it is, the level of prominence it is, its location, so, thank you.
Any other comments to staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to speak on this item at this time? No? All right. Madam Secretary, have we received any written correspondence on this item?
We have not.
All right. We will now open for public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on item number six? Hearing done. We'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Does anybody in the commission like to make a motion at this point in time? Lynette?
I'll move recommended action to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2018-10 as condition.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second is Cynthia. Okay. Do we have any discussion at this time on this item? Hearing done, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote is six-zero with Eric Alderetti absent. Okay, we'll close the business calendar at this point in time. We go to comments. Does staff have any comments at this time?
None?
None? Okay. Do any... We'll start with commissioners. Phil, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to welcome our new director, welcome the board. Looking forward to working with you as well. I wanted to follow up with staff on MHA. Want to know what the latest is on that. We've had different statuses brought forward to us. One was they had a certain timeframe in which to apply for a conditional use permit. Then at a subsequent meeting, we were told that you may or may not have to. So I just want to know what the latest is.
Staff's continuing to work with the county and the applicant to ensure performance. And at this point, it's an open code enforcement case, so it's not really... We can't really comment on it any more than that. But it is... We are continuing to work with them, and they are within their 60-day period to comply.
And that was another thing, and I know I'd asked Lisa this. So how did we go from a 30-day notice violation to a 60-day? That kind of jumped on us. It doubled, actually. So how did that happen?
I'm not sure, but I will check into that. I will look into that.
So you don't know why it went from 30 to 60 days?
I know it was given 60 days.
Okay, because it was reported that was 30. So that's why I just wanted a little clarification for that.
Yeah. Typically, for a CUP, we would not... We would not award a 30-day, just because of the time period to do the application. But I will... I will put my mind where it is.
Okay, and then just one more thing on that. So there was also... It was brought up that there was a letter that was found from code enforcement, of all places, and that there was still this investigation of whether or not they would actually have to have a conditional use permit.
That continues to be explored, but it is an open case. And so we cannot publicly announce anything one way or another until we get... Until the case is concluded. As an open code enforcement case, we cannot discuss it publicly.
So I assume then, at the conclusion of the 60 days, you'll have an update for us?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Lynette?
I wanted to just welcome our new executive director. I look forward to working with you as well. So thank you for attending our meeting tonight. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Again, welcome. And I look forward to working with you as well. I just want to say Happy belated Mother's Day to all the moms on staff and to the moms here on the dice. Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Ken?
This is one I would like to welcome, our new executive director, Mintai. But the hoping week, you can able to help us to expedite our CD process and make up... Promote Santa as a business-friendly city. Again, welcome.
Beatrice?
Thank you. Just like Cynthia, I want to say Happy Mother's Day and also welcome to our new director. You're gonna have a lot of fun working with us. And to staff, I have a general question that, you know, I would like to understand as a commissioner, but when... I'm gonna give you an example. Like, let's say a restaurant is operating for three years, and then a new one takes over. Are new plans always requested? Or can you approve business with the old plans? Or what is the process?
It depends on if they want to modify the building or their... Or if it's been vacant for a certain amount of time, so... Are you asking if it... If it comes back to you? Is that your question?
No, no. The question is, there's a business that just took over, and I did address it to staff as well. But this business came in, you know... Everything was transferred correctly, but then now the city's asking for a new plan. So my question was that. When the new business comes in, do they always have to present new plans? Because I think maybe we should have guided them from the beginning so that maybe they could have taken the business somewhere else. It's just like a general question, like in terms of the processes.
Okay. And the... But typically, if they're going to modify the building, then they would come in with new plans. And if they modify it enough, then it may or may not come before you.
Okay, and what if they didn't modify it at all?
If they didn't modify it all, at all? And if it... If the business had not been closed for more than six months, it would not be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Beatrice? Again, welcome, Mint. Sorry we couldn't see you in the beginning there in a corner. Apologize on that. One question I have is, with regards to the next meeting, which is a special meeting, can we add agenda items to it? Or is it just a special meeting for that item?
I believe the intent was it's gonna be a special meeting just for that item.
Okay, so there's no other agenda items at this point?
No.
All right. Okay. With that, I'll call for adjournment. And before, I'd like to make a mention that the meeting that is going to be joined to is a special meeting, and it will be on May 21st at 5:30 PM in these chambers. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Sarah? Do we get the validation? Is this it? It might take... Thank you. We did well for all those items we had.
I know. I'm in the...
Hi, did you... Is this here about the validation, or is it my ticket? Thank you.
That's right. Sarah? We're talking about calling the... They were calling the meeting. Yeah, I talked to Norma, and then... Can I talk to Norma? That we would adjourn it to the... A hard discussion meeting on a particular date, and then also on the agenda...
Good luck.
So, yeah, I asked...
Yeah, of course.
And also, when we talked about when you all these dressed in, and then you were in the office, I said, what exactly would you do about the agenda? And it was a special meeting, so that's what I promised agenda. Yeah, I said, can you...
I got...
Well, I went in and I said, idea? Okay.
She told you didn't have to re-notice before you noticed it as well.
Yeah, so the required... That's what we were... We didn't want to have to go and re-notice everything, and then because we have to have ten days. So it was tomorrow, I put an adjourned notice on the chamber. I have to do it within 24 hours. I put it here, and then in the minutes reflected that it was adjourned. And then he... They voted upon it.
Good night.
Have a good night. Anything else?
Yeah, because I just... When Vince had told me about it, I said, let's call Lisa first, just to make sure that it's the right words. Yeah. Because are we saying continue the item? Are we saying continue the item? What is the difference?